Oh, I need this now. I need this like, okay, I'm giving you. Yeah, that was pretty wild last night. That was.
Having any terrorism? How are you going to finish that sentence?
Not quite that bad, but.
It's all for calm right now.
When he hurt his ankle at the end of the first half, pretty good and he was limp. I was not as comfortable as I could have been. Doing his jogging to the locker room. I was like, well, it can't be too bad. You joke. Yeah, the only time I could scramble, I just had to run straight.
I got no S P and Z packet from February sixth.
That might bring it up.
I was. You can go to the website, the town website.
Oh, yeah.
And that's how I usually.
I thought maybe it was down here, but. Little sweet. Like a puppy.
You know how to find it on the website.
Always come and get that for you, Jerry.
I think Kyle has it for him.
Yeah, I can pull it up, but.
Usually I just click that's right there. Is the four thirteenth.
Uh, that's the minutes. This is the agenda.
There we go. Thank you.
With that, so I have, you know what? It has the agenda, but it doesn't have the entire packet attached to it though. It's okay.
There's one down there. We can grab him if he wants.
I grabbed one.
I got it.
Yeah, you're on.
So that's just the agenda.
Just the page. That's all it is. Let's go this way. We'll make it work.
Sheila's coming. She'll get a second.
Thanks. We all trying. Just the agenda, but not the packet.
Due to technical difficulties.
Usually I live in all on Zoom, but not this one.
I didn't do nothing. I was a dentist turn. It's not there.
Looks like Rob one got loaded this.
Oh.
There we go. Hey, we got it.
Jeff in his office or is he just not?
He's in Florida.
He's joining us remotely tonight. Yeah. When Sheila gets back. All right. She's back at her desk. So uh, the time is seven oh six P M. And I will call this meeting to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Riechel.
Here.
Pro Tem not.
Here.
Trustee Brittonal.
Here.
Trustee Klassen.
Here.
Trustee Flores.
Here.
Trustee Hanrahan.
Here.
Trusty Seaford.
Here.
All right. May we rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the line of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, be seated. Uh, the first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, did we have any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items?
No, sir. I did not hear from anyone.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Did we have anybody sign in?
Nobody signed in.
All right, nobody signed in. Uh, so we will move on to the consent agenda, which contains the minutes of the January twenty third, twenty twenty three Board of Trustees meeting. And the approval of the police car lease purchase agreement with the Bank of Colorado. We like to discuss either one of those or make a motion.
I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, the questions for Police Chief Kate, um, the uh, Police Car Lease. I saw one. It said one was all wheel drive. Are these both all wheel drive? Because it just.
All of, all of my all wheel drive.
Okay. I just, just needed clarification. Thank you.
Okay, I have a quick question for Amy. Amy, is the cost the same? For the lease versus when we were going to buy them outright?
Yes, the cost is the same. We're gonna, when we're finished with the lease, we're purchasing them for a dollar. So it's, it's the same.
Hopefully they're worth more, right?
That ship is sailed, I think so. All right, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's presented.
A second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Pro Tem not to approve the consent agenda, seconded by uh, trustee Clausen. I was in favor.
Hi.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
Nothing here.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. None, Mr. Mayor.
None for me either. Uh, do we have any agenda changes by the board or by staff? No.
Yep, I'm not aware of any uh, by the staff. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay. Awesome. We will move right along then to the uh, Presentation update from High Water Farms with Becca and Eva. Okay. Come on up.
Um, we have a powered way. Is it possible to pull it up somehow?
Let's see.
Sheila's got it.
She was on it.
Nice.
Oh, sure, yeah. Cool.
All right. Turn it over to you guys. Yeah.
Well, thank you. Um, so yeah, thank you all for um, giving us the space to give you some updates on the farm. Um, just, I'm just curious. Has anyone been to the farm or been out to the, to High Water?
Yeah, I still have not.
I've been out there, but not. But not.
We're here still, so like the intentions there.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
I have been there several times.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, Justin, I was gonna say the same thing. We buy the stuff from you at the farmer's market, but I've still not been to the farm, so.
Hello. Well, there's not much to see right now. It's pretty snowy. Um, so we can move to the next slide. Well, so our mission is to use sustainable agriculture to transform the lives of young people and increase access to healthy food in Garfield County. Next slide. Um, so the three ways that we do that is by growing food, which we sell to farmers markets through our community supported agriculture CSA program and through wholesale accounts um, with lift up. Uh, empowering youth, which Ava's gonna talk a little bit more about our summer youth program and our academic year program and fueling community. So those are opportunities where we have um, meals on the farm, uh, volunteer activities, different opportunities for people to come out and experience um, uh, sustainable agriculture. Cool. Um, so this kind of shows how we've grown um, since twenty twenty, which was the first year um, in production. So our first year, we grew on half an acre. Um, in twenty twenty one, we grew to an acre. Twenty twenty two is about an acre and a quarter. And in twenty twenty three, we hope to be cultivating about two acres. Um, and that does involve um, some land that's in cover crop. So most of it is in vegetables, mixed diversified vegetables, but um, some of that's also resting or fallowed. So in twenty twenty, we grew eight thousand pounds of produce on the quarter acre. Um, and that was kind of a big startup year. So um, building out all the infrastructure structures on the farm irrigation. Um, and we started with our wholesale contract with lift up um, and did a few different farmers markets. This past year in twenty twenty two, we grew thirty five thousand pounds of produce. Um, about ten fifteen percent of that we sent to lift up um, the food pantry system in the valley. Um, and we had uh, both a summer youth program and an academic year youth program. Um, and some seventy members CSA and some various community events.
Uh, yeah, I'll jump in here for a second. Um, If you haven't already heard of our summer youth program, we try to spread the word, especially right now, this, this time of season, trying to um, You know, talk to all the schools and teachers and get the word out because we are accepting applications right now. So if you know anyone ages fourteen to seventeen, um, it's the time to apply. Yeah, so that's eight weeks in the summer. It's a job training program. It's also a job in itself. They're earning, you know, good pay. Um, it's also just like This different space for them to learn about local agriculture and um, Yeah, learn how to work as a team and get some education in, you know, some, some alternative education outside of school during the summer. So um, we hope to achieve a lot during this program in terms of personal development and skills. Um, and again, they're getting paid pretty well. Um, so it's an exciting program. We're going into our third season. So we're hoping to develop that as well. Um, typically, we've been able to hire about a group of eight. So we're looking to hire about ten teams this summer. Um, and we mentioned the academic year program as well. We started that last season. That's just an opportunity for them to continue out through the school year um, and have more of a role in leadership. So Returners um, in the summer youth program, they have some leadership opportunities as well, but the academic year program allows them to work during the school year a little bit.
So with the summer youth program?
Yeah.
What's the um, time commitment generally per week for each person?
Oh, yeah, the season we're looking at four days a week. Um, it's eight AM to three P M. And we do expect a full commitment for those entire eight weeks.
Yeah.
Which is going to be um, mid-June to mid-August.
Right, okay. And then you said about ten, you wanted to hire this year?
Correct.
How, like, how does that work with the kids that worked the year before that want to come back the next year? Are they allowed to come back? Or then do you just Hire a new group of ten to give them the experience?
That's a great question. Yeah, we're actually sort of working through that right now. Um, we only had two returners apply last season and we have a lot more returners who have applied this season already.
Okay.
So um, that's something we're actually gonna try to just figure out, but typically um, The way we handle returners is providing um, extra responsibilities. For instance, like last season, they would come in either thirty minutes earlier, thirty minutes late um, and have specific like Chicken chores, um, extra responsibilities. And then Again, you know, we would be hoping to provide a little bit more of a, a leadership role.
Yeah.
So um, you know, helping lead a little bit of educational workshops and um, just helping provide a good model for the rest of the crew.
Right, okay. And then you guys provide them with any of like the necessary things that they need as far as like proper footwear or pants or gloves or anything like that? Or is that just the sole responsibility of the team that comes to work for you guys?
That's a great question. Um, yeah, that isn't something we've been able to provide typically.
Okay.
So um, just, just like the crew worker T-shirt that everyone wears, um, the High Water T-shirt, that's all we've provided typically in terms of like materials, but you know, all the tools and things like that. Um, we always have extra hats, gloves on hand. So we have some basics.
Yeah.
Um, but not footwear or anything like that.
Got it, okay.
Um, I think we covered most of that, but um, yeah, that's just kind of some of the things we hope to achieve.
Cool. Um, so like I mentioned before, the primary way we get our food out to the community is through our community supported agriculture program or CSA program. Um, so this year, we're hoping to have a hundred to a hundred and twenty membership. So that includes pickups in the evening on Thursdays in silt. Um, Saturday mornings in silt, and then we do a box pickup in Glenwood and Carbonell. Um, so it's really fun. Like the pickup on the farm is really exciting. We kind of have a market style for all of our vegetables. So we harvest the amount, the quantities that we need. And then folks come and they fill like a canvas bag with whatever they're gonna use for the week. And we also have U-Pick crops. So things like cherry tomatoes and green beans and snap peas, those are all harvest your own. So farm members can come, bring their kids, um, explore the farm a little bit. And that's kind of a, it's a nice way for people to connect with um, the agriculture and kind of see how the farm changes too throughout the season. Um, so this year our memberships are seven hundred dollars. Um, and that's for sixteen to eighteen weeks of produce um, from mid-June to mid-October. Um, and we are also developing systems this season to be a SNAP retailer. So folks can use their SNAP benefits to help pay for the CSA shares as well.
So I have a, on the seven hundred dollar membership fee with that, with the amount of produce that somebody can get in that span of time, I mean, is that a pretty, is it a significant savings? And if we were to go to the grocery store and get it, is it pretty comparable? Or is it a little bit more expensive? Do you guys know?
Yeah, it's a, that's a really good question. Um, so every week as we're harvesting and like figuring out what we're gonna distribute for this ESA, I record the actuals. So um, like if someone were to fill, you know, their entire share, their full bag for the week and use all that produce, I kind of record what that max would be.
Yeah.
Um, and it fluctuates a lot, like August, September. It's like sometimes a weekly share is worth almost a hundred dollars worth of produce. Um, it kind of depends. We try to encourage folks to take what they need. So not necessarily like.
So at least it.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so some families will just like use a lot of vegetables and cook a lot of vegetables. Other families, you know, don't use as much. So we also try to encourage folks to kind of take what they need and knowing that anything extra that we harvest will be routed to lift up or to other families.
Nice, okay.
Where do you advertise that? Just social media? Or do you, your, your, your products and your, you know, where do you advertise on?
Yeah, that's something we're, we're working on because it's a relatively new concept to an area like the CSA model. Um, we kind of do all sorts of things. So social media, um, we hang flyers like in the libraries and different community spaces. Um, a lot of it too is like word of mouth we found. So one family will be involved. They'll bring their friends or family, other family members to the farm and then hopefully, you know, the next year we'll have other folks interested.
I noticed on the website, it says the membership fee is seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Is that price difference just to handle the credit card transaction?
Yeah, exactly. So if you pay with check, it's uh, seven hundred dollars.
Um, we can talk a little bit about our volunteer opportunities. That's um, in the spring and fall to augment the season that the youth are on the farm. Um, obviously having that crew there takes care of a lot of that workload. So um, we typically won't have A lot of volunteer opportunities happening during that time unless like specifically working with the youth program. Um, so we have open volunteer days pretty much weekly. Um, and that's where anyone can come and check out the farm, usually about two hours. And we also just um, We coordinate with other groups to have specific um, volunteer experiences. So like literacy outreach, um, just certain groups in the community who want to Go do something together as a large group. Um, we set that up as well. So It's usually pretty exciting to have volunteers out on the farm. It doesn't happen that often, but when it does, it's um, just like really cool experience for the group to see what agriculture is about and for us to get a lot done. Um, and then community events is also very similar. Um, people aren't working, but they are, you know, experiencing the farm in a very cool way. Most of them include a, a meal that's made from High Water Farm produce. And um, this picture here is from the community lunch that happens midsummer where the youth help cook that meal with chefs and um, get to be really proud of that and contribute to their community in that way. So Community events are also very, very exciting days for us.
Cool. Yeah, so just to recap, um, in twenty twenty-three, we're gonna have two acres in production and um, we have to have a hundred and twenty members in our CSA. Um, we'll continue working with lift up through our uh, wholesale contract. So our produce will be moving across the valley in that way as well. Um, We will be running the summer youth program like Ava mentioned. We'll hope to have about ten teens in that program and an academic year program, which is like a next level internship for um, teens who have successfully completed the summer program. Um, and we will be at the Newcastle Farmers Market this season as well. Um, and like I mentioned before, we are now a SNAP in Wick retailer, so we can accept those payments for CSA and at Farmers Market. Cool. Um, yeah, so thank you so much um, for your support of the farm and giving us the space to provide some updates about our work.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I guess I got one ending question here, maybe not any question, but is the produce you guys grow considered organic?
Hmm, so we're not certified organic. Um, everything, we don't spray any pesticides or herbicides, so our practices are organic. Um, Just based on like uh, the way we move our produce because so much of it is direct to consumer. It doesn't really make sense for us to pay for the organic.
Certification.
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys have fruit trees out there?
No, I would love to. Yeah, I would love to do that. It's, yeah, we wrote a grant for um, hopefully for some like perennial windbreak. So um, we're hoping to integrate some fruit into that if possible, but.
Excellent.
All right. Great.
Nice.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the request for extension, the final plat for Autumn Ridge, and I will turn this over to Planner Chain.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is fairly straightforward agenda item. There is a request, excuse me, to extend the final, final approval, finalization of the Minor subdivision, final plat for Autumn Ridge. There's a thirty day uh, timeframe where you're supposed to complete this. And I actually think it's because In many cases, a minor subdivision, which is for fewer lots, is just an old town site uh, property. Uh, this one's a bit more complicated, but we needed more time to do it. Uh, the attorney was away. Uh, the applicant is uh, attending the meeting here remotely. And um, I think all people, staff and the applicant request a sixty day extension. And uh, the thirty day requirement, just for the record, is from section sixteen point one zero point zero eight zero A. And then the board is allowed to extend Finalization of the final plat by section sixteen point one zero point zero eight zero D. And they have a uh, sample motion in the packet for you.
Thank you. I have no issue with giving it in this extension. Does anybody else?
None.
No, Mr. Mary, I make a motion to extend the deadline for processing and obtaining all recordation documents for the final plat for the Autumn Ridge Minor Subdivision until April tenth.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mayor Pro Tem not seconded by trustee Brittonal. I was in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is the continued first reading of ordinance number one, series twenty twenty-three. Uh, in Orange, the town of Silt, Colorado, granting a cable system franchise to Comcast of Colorado. And staff has requested continuance to February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and I will turn this over to Administrator Lehman.
I don't have anything to add except uh, that we do anticipate having this finished now. Uh, on uh, I'm bringing it to you uh, for the first reading on February twenty-seventh. Uh, we, we have a couple of emails going around today trying to uh, nail that, nail that down. We've just had a couple of things we wanna Uh, eyes to dot and t's to cross.
Same thing. Anybody had any issues with this?
Nope.
You know, Mr. Mary, I make a motion to continue the first reading of ordinance number one, series twenty twenty-three to the February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mayor Pro Tem not to continue the first reading of ordinance number one, series twenty twenty-three to the February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three Board of Trustees meeting, seconded by trustee Seifert. All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, next item on the agenda is the topics of discussion for future joint work sessions between the Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. And I will turn this over to Administrator Lehman.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just continuing our um, Kind of our, our practice of having uh, roughly quarterly meetings with P and Z and uh, annual meetings with the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, we have both of those uh, Coming up in the near future. And uh, so we just wanted to kind of have a conversation with you to see uh, what topics you'd like to see on those agendas. Uh, both for the P and Z and for the Board of County Commissioners. Um, maybe we, maybe we could start with the uh, P and Z, if you don't mind. And uh, maybe uh, Mark or, or uh, Nicole could talk a little bit about uh, what they heard from The P and Z last time. I know there was uh, I know they had the same topic on their agenda. So uh, it just kind of makes, see, see where they are and where you are uh, in this meeting.
Sounds good.
Mark's uh, talking, but I think he's muted.
I am. Okay, I thought Sheila was uh, Uh, muting me there. So excuse, anyway, I'll start and then hand it over to Nicole. Uh, the first thing is we'll have to identify when that work session would be, but Uh, in general discussion, uh, the planning commission Had questions, wanted to talk to the board. Well, first of all, about the uh, issue de jour, which is the water treatment plant. Uh, they also wanted to touch base on uh, adopting new building and energy codes and get those as close up to snuff and as quickly as possible. And uh, they thought perhaps it may be a time to talk about affordable housing. And that's what I have on my list. Nicole, my, I think I'm missing one or two things. Do you remember what they are?
Um, the list that I sent to Sheila and Jeff about what the commissioners wanted to talk about was The importance of code changes in general. Um, their concern that there's Many code changes that need to be revised. And so they wanted to kind of talk about what the game plan is for that. Um, affordable housing, the water treatment plant. And then The commissioners were also wanting to know if the board had guidance for them In terms of approving new development and growth and what that should look like. And then the P and Z also wanted to know if there was anything that they could better support the town and the trustees with and what that would look like. So they're more looking for guidance in the last couple of things.
Yeah, and also I think they're Everybody else, I think they're interested to see uh, about Increase funding possibilities for both the pedestrian bike overpass As the vehicular overpass, which that came up more than discussion. Uh, we had Trey there. Trey comes at least once a year and usually every six months. Talk to the planning commission about what's going on from Public Works, what questions the planning commission has, with the things that we have.
I think the, I think the items that the P and Z commissioners came up with are Pretty substantial and will take up the majority of the time. That'll take a whole meeting. I think what we could do, um, and then you guys chime in on this, but I think we could maybe group most of that together if we could do some sort of a Like a general overview of our comprehensive plan For the town. And you know, I think maybe what we could do is look at our comprehensive plan, you know, and then maybe we discuss our zoning app with them. You know, we had the, quite a bit of discussion with Autumn Ridge, you know, going from R one to R three. You know, and how that fit into the comprehensive plan. And Mayor Riechel brought up the past history of that parcel and why it came into the downtown corridor. And maybe why not? So that would might be a good way to kind of tie that.
Okay.
So. Yeah.
I'm sure they'd want to talk about that.
I'd like a short list in advance of the, the specific items within the existing code that they'd like us to take a look at so we can do our homework and show up ready to have a more active discussion than a learning discussion.
I wonder what we could do with that planner chain. As I know over the last, oh, I don't know. How long have you been helping us out here? A couple of years?
Yeah, two years, I think.
Yeah, I know it's kind of things have come up, like each year as we've gone through, we've made changes and updates to our, you know, um, codes, you know, where they might find either Things that are irrelevant now or out of date. Gosh, even just type.
I can tell you that staff Has a list of close to a hundred different codes that we think need to be changed or updated.
Okay.
That we've talked about in staff meetings or That staff has come across in our day-to-day stuff. that staff has come across in our day to day stuff. And Sheila maintains that list, and I believe we're getting close to a hundred different codes that we.
Right now.
Okay. Halfway to a hundred.
Yeah.
So what, but what about a top ten list? Yeah. Prioritize top ten list, so we could address those first. Cause going through sixty two is not gonna happen in one work session.
Yeah, and I do want to let you know that code items that are in subdivision and zoning times they are more complicated than some of the other things in the normal town code. I mean, for example, if you're in the subdivision or the zoning sections of the code, that's title sixteen seventeen, they take um public hearings. Um, and some of the items are pretty simple, just need to be updated and tweaked, something like, you know, maybe we need to be sixty or ninety days for finalizing a final platform minor subdivision instead of thirty. And some are their own topics and are very important, have to do with um uh density and other such things that are related to zoning and development. I'm sorry, go ahead, Nicole.
When the commissioners brought up the code changes, they were specifically initially bringing it up asking questions about whether or not um Mr. Jim Bennett that had come in to put, to replace a worn down um trailer with something that didn't meet code as far as the size and it being a factory-built and an R two. So they were more specifically asking if we've made any headway on trying to revise the code to better accommodate some of our downtown area where people are gonna start replacing some of the homes that are there. So when they brought that up, that's initially what started the conversation. It, it may have kind of escalated and deterred into different things, but I think if you just talked about that one topic of code change, that would be beneficial. Because that's gonna be, that's gonna be a good conversation.
I think we talked about that because of the time and the process it took, right, for that particular person to get that kind of variance, if you will, to put that home in, so I remember that.
Okay, yeah, that's correct.
I remember that. And yeah, I mean, just because the water plant's the biggest thing, yeah, I'd kind of like to know how they feel about it. Are they for the water plant? Are they against it? You know, just kind of a general.
That's right. Yeah, I mean, I think all those items that's a couple hours.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we got one.
Yeah.
The only other things I had on my list were uh tiny homes. I think we should probably hit the code requirement section for multifamily and commercial. And make that clear, and then affordable housing was on my list.
I wouldn't have anything to add. I think that's good.
Yeah, then then maybe vacation rentals, we kind of discuss that from time to time, but and I don't know if that's part of the, what Mayor Riekel was that ties into his.
No, mine was for what, what are we, I think we need to define tiny home.
Okay.
And um my big thing is you do a tiny home, you end up with maybe only paying for half an EQR of water, half an EQR too, but we have a water plant, so I don't, I've never got the reason why. I think every structure is at least one EQR. They're making a water and sewer tap, no matter what you're you're using, so why are we giving half away?
Because it's listed as tiny home. Or, yeah, yeah, got it. Okay.
No, I, I see your point, yeah, one EQR is
It's a tap, I mean, it's
Yeah.
A tap's a tap, and then it's basically should be based on volume of water use. After that, I would think, but.
Yeah.
Personal opinion, so.
All right, yeah, let's get into that.
Well, this is useful to know your concerns and uh, yeah, so we can do a little bit of work on our end and hopefully make the session better for both uh parties.
Yeah, and I, and I agree that, yeah, there have been things in the code that have needed tweaked or changed for many years, so yeah. Nice to talk about some of those.
Great, okay, well then, uh, what about the county commissioners? Well, I, I think we have a tentative date for them, although I don't have it right in front of me. I think it's a month or six weeks off.
March thirteenth.
March thirteenth.
So my, my, I'll tell you, I think my approach would be with about the Board of County Commissioners as it relates to our water needs and the plant. And then give me your thought on that, but I think it would be really valuable to have you know, maybe some historical data on the bulk water usage that's come out of the town. Because I would imagine most of that probably goes to county residents. In city residents and
And I have that.
Yeah, right, I've seen it, you know, but maybe we could just give that to them and then have that as part of the discussion, right? We need a water plant. We don't serve just the citizens of Silt. We serve the surrounding county. You know, um, and then kind of go from there and see, but I would think the majority of that conversation would be about water. You know, and then we could ask them you know, how we can get help funding it, whether it is through the county, whether it's through the state, if they have any other avenues to go federally with some of the infrastructure bill money. I don't know, I'd be interested to see what they say and maybe if they can help, so. What do you guys think?
No, I, I agree, yeah.
Water should be the only topic right now, because it is the biggest thing affecting the town in the short term, and it's something where the commissioners can, can play a role.
Yeah.
And I don't want them distracted by anything else right now.
And, and it will affect the county, you know, if, if, if the, the wells dry up and if, if we can't afford to give bulk water anymore, you know, then it will affect them.
Yeah. Water.
Oh, and, and one, well, I did have a, an additional thing, and yes, primarily water, but years ago, the county commissioners, you know, wanted to redo the Davis Point intersection because it was, they had like a list of two or three really dangerous intersections in the county. And and I just wanted to ask them if they had any, you know, uh immediate plans or, you know, in the next couple of years to redo that intersection, because if they do, it would be nice for the town to, you know, get some conduits in there for a water line or sewer line or, or, or what have you, and you know, things of that nature, and if there is a, someday a path. You know, I'm not saying the town will build it, but if there is someday a path out to the high school, you know, how does that fit in with the rebuild of that intersection?
Did you drive on that road today?
No.
It's after.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That'll sloughen off like crazy, right?
Yeah. It's a good question.
So.
I'm always a little worried about that retaining while it's up there, too. Looks a little suspect.
Yeah.
So.
And they moved in a lot of years. I guess one thing I'd like to see if they can help us get this bridge repaved or do something with that. I know Trey's been working, but maybe they can, I don't know. I know we bought harp on it, and maybe they can put a word in, see if we can get that repaired, because them chop potholes are getting bigger and bigger and bigger.
I know, I mentioned it, Trey too.
I know, but you know.
Probably, well, the state was planning on doing it late last year and didn't get it done. I believe it's still there, but nothing's gonna happen until the weather breaks.
I know, yeah, but I said maybe the commissioners can put a little
It is, it would be interesting to know, I, I would imagine CDOT has some sort of hard schedule, right, that will maybe not a hard schedule, but a, like a hard list of projects that are gonna get done? Do they?
When we were at that meeting, you know, they had, you know, like Newcastle's getting around about.
Yeah, they have, they have their ten year plan.
Ten year plan, yeah.
Well, I was this
Like seasonal.
Seasonal maintenance, I don't know if they have a hard list like that.
Okay.
But, yeah, the major projects, they have their ten year plan and all that stuff.
Can't hurt to mention it, though, but.
No, I, I agree, can't hurt to mention it, you know, that article in the paper last.
Maybe they can, you know, might go to nowhere, maybe they can put the word in and help Trey out a little bit and get it bumped up.
But yeah, that article in the paper last week, the county commissioners weren't too fond of helping that Southbridge project in Glenwood.
Oh.
So.
Yeah.
That's a different animal.
Totally different.
It's a different, yes, it's a different animal, but you know, but based on the water. Yeah, there, there's a ton of county residents that use this interchange too, so maybe we do have an angle there.
All right, yeah, all right, so that's good. What else? Probably should add to it, okay. So maybe we should lead with the bridge and then the Davis Point. And then get into the water. Yeah.
Because if we get in the water first, nothing else.
Right, it'll.
Water's gonna take, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and scheduling a follow-up meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. When can we get, when, when can we get y'all back in here? Let's get them locked in for more, more frequent interactions.
Yeah.
Staff have direction?
Yeah, I might suggest, uh, Mr. Mayor, that we report back to you uh next uh meeting on the twenty seventh on that uh bulk water data. Uh, I want you to be, go into that meeting well-prepared before we just pitch it out there to the world.
Sounds good.
Yes, that's good.
And uh, this, this is Mark, I have a question. Do we have a date for the work session with the board and planning commission?
I don't think.
March thirteenth is what our.
March thirteen, okay.
No, that's with the county commissioners.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I miss, I misheard what you said, Mark.
March twenty seventh, Mark.
March twenty seven, okay, thank.
We're tentative, tentatively at right now.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I think that takes care of that agenda item. Uh, next up is administrator and staff reports. We'll start with Administrator Lehman.
I uh, I, I was gonna highlight something, but actually I wasn't, so I'll just uh leave it open to the board for any questions about any thing on my report.
What's, what's the brewing? You know, interest in the fifteen acre property of West of Holiday Inn, the concept, can you say?
I, I think we can, we can certainly say, I'm just trying to, Mark, can you? You've been talking to those folks, is Mark still on? He's not on. It's, yeah, give me one second, I, go ahead.
Yeah, Jeff, I, it's a mixed use.
Oh, that's right, I did see.
They had it laid out, there was some multifamily stuff, there was some like hotel pads, some commercial.
Restaurants.
Kind of a variety of different things in their conceptual drawing that they had.
Well, that's nice.
Yeah. Yeah, they're, and uh, I think they're uh, the hope, the hope is they're deep-pocketed, so they've got some resources to stay in the course, you know, when things uh get difficult, so hopefully that's the case.
Yes.
And, yeah, I had a question for either you or Trey, the IMTPR. Yeah, said the, the uh oh, that funding could go toward Cottonwood Pass instead of projects that benefit.
They, they are applying or they are looking for support to apply for a raise grant. Which is the newer version of the Build Back Better, Build Back America. It's had multiple names. The IMTPR was looking for support because they want to do a raise grant for Cottonwood Pass and start looking at updating it and um, trying to widen some spots, trying to make it more.
Yeah, you passable, right, year round?
Passable year round.
Yeah.
And at the IMTPR meeting I was at when this first brought up, there was mixed reviews. Um, the county commissioner that was there myself, even I believe Gypsum and some others was like that's an off-system road, why are we even considering that? That's an off-system for CDOT. And also, there's needs at interchanges up and down I seventy that need help every day and just not when the canyon's closed on a temporary basis type thing, so.
Okay, yeah, that was my question. So if they went ahead and do that, does that reduce our chances of funding?
Um, I don't think it'll go anywhere if they don't get the raise grant. So this is mainly gonna be funded through a raise grant if they get it. I don't know the match, where they're trying to pull the match from, but wherever they pull the match from, yes, it's gonna come out of either IMTPR money, region three money, you know, the the areas of CDOT that are in this area, that money's gotta come from someplace, so more than likely it'll come from one of them to divisions and so, yeah, it would dwindle the money that is in for like maintenance or who knows what.
Well, and, and if the raise grant is not used on Cottonwood Pass, it's not one of those things that's likely to be used anywhere else in, in the, you know, in our region. So I, we're not really competing with anybody for the raise grant, so to speak. Uh, it's just um I mean, I guess it could, could be, but I, I, I don't see that money going to another project. Do you, Trey? I mean, I, I just, it's uh, it's unlikely to go anywhere else in the region.
Yeah, I don't know that they'll apply for a raise grant for anything else. I don't know what their intent was if it wasn't for Cottonwood Pass. They didn't really clarify that.
Could they apply for a raise grant for all these interchanges that could work, or is that different?
No, they could, they just got a raise grant for three or four different projects, so it can encompass more than one.
I think the other, the other problem we have is that if we go, if uh, I, I think these raise grants, they're big enough to where if you get one in your region uh in one year and then apply for it later yeah, within a, a year or two, you're less likely to get it because somebody else's is hot, is up. That they're, they're ahead of you in line. So I think one of the things we're talking about is we hate to see it used in our region for Cottonwood Pass and off-system.
Yeah, I, I agree.
When maybe we should be applying it to those things that we use every day.
All right, yeah. I think we could probably all agree with that.
Well, that's the letter I wrote, so I'm, uh, or the email I wrote to them, so I'm glad you agree.
All right.
Oh, I was gonna ask Chief Kite, did the new lieutenant start yet, or is he not starting until the end of February? I see that we hired him. Chief Kite there?
He is, but I don't know if, um, he, he's starting February twenty seventh.
Oh, he's gonna start February twenty seventh?
Yeah.
Hey. Chief, what's up?
Yeah, he does exist.
He does. I was just asking if the if the new lieutenant we hired had started, or if you're gonna, it sounds like he's starting on the twenty seventh. Sweet. Awesome.
Can't hear you.
Oh, yeah, he's not by a microphone.
Thank you.
He will start on the twenty seventh, at which time um that board meeting, they'll be introduced to the board and you guys can ask questions if you wish.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one more. Um, CDPHE, not for sure why they couldn't tell us all at one time. I told you last time that we moved up to a level two in distribution and collections and they doubled one of our tests. We found out like a week and a half later, our lead and copper. We currently sample ten and we have twenty sites listed under the new one, we're going to have to sample twenty sites and list forty sites. So we're in the process of trying to figure out what houses will meet the requirements that we need to be a lead and copper sample site.
Do you pull them out of like Peter's faucet?
Homeowner has to do it for us.
Oh, okay.
Because it's, the, the test is a first draw, the system's gotta set idle for six hours. And then the first water that comes out of the tap's gotta be.
And then the first water that comes out of the taps gotta be collected for the sample.
I got it, okay.
I see you posted you're gonna do the backflow preventers.
Yeah, we posted that, it's that time, we gotta be a yearly test and. We hope to have them all by May first. And if not, we'll send out letters again and then have to shut people off. When, if we don't get compliance.
Yeah, it's a good post, it should get everybody's, what they gotta do.
And it's all on the website, under the weight, the water wastewater tab. Yeah, and then I, well, just because it's on Jeff's, uh, report. Um, maybe it wasn't. No, the, yeah, the, uh, or maybe this is a question for Nicole, the lot split at Fifth and Orchard. It's on Jeff's list. I was just curious what they were. Doing on that.
Yeah, what they're trying to do is just subdivide. So that they can sell two different properties.
Oh, okay, so just one lot to two?
Yes.
Okay. And then. Sorry, I'm jumping around.
It's all good.
The Marionia annexation. What is that?
That's the one little parcel on West, um, West Home that is still in the county. It's right next to what, um, what the town has approved to be the Main Street Plaza. It's in between that and a parcel that has a single family on it that is in the town, so. They're trying to develop that parcel, and when they went to the county and said, we wanna put a septic and, but we don't have a well and. The county told them, it's, it's in your best interest and the town's best interest to annex that property in so that. Um, cause they are enclaves, so it'll be in the best interest of, make sure that they are part of the town.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it's on the road as if you're going into the, um, to the tariff subdivision. It's one of the parcels off to the left-hand side as you're going, um, you're going west into the tariff subdivision.
Okay, kind of where that concrete storage yard is.
That's exactly what it is. It's the JJJ construction, the, that's the Marionis that own that construction business, so they need it. What they're trying to do is annex that parcel in.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Nicole.
Yeah.
All right.
I have a quick.
One, one last thing, Mr., go ahead, go ahead, uh.
Just, just a quick question, Jeff, about the, uh, recent changes at the Chamber of Commerce. Can you provide any insights, or do we have to wait for Larry to come and meet with us?
Well, I think they've had pretty much a whole, my understanding is they've had a, uh, sort of a wholesale, uh, changing of the guard with the board. Uh, and, uh, but I think they're, but not staff. So, um, but I think their focus. Uh, you, you know, he, he basically just said they're gonna do what they can to reengage, uh, all the businesses in there. Um, you know, both their, uh, areas.
Well, if there's one person out here that I think could make some really good changes to that Chamber of Commerce, it's Larry, so. I was really happy to see that he was now heading that up, so.
I, I don't know him at all, but I've heard of him and know a little bit about him, and I, I have the same feeling.
He's great, Larry's great.
Yeah, and, and I believe Larry's on our veil board.
He is indeed.
Yep.
Right.
And he sat in on our, uh. Uh, community panel for our, uh, police lieutenant. Uh, application or, uh, selection process.
That's all right.
Hey, so Mr. Mayor, um, I did mention in here the, uh, state of the community luncheon coming up on March eighth. Uh, if any of you would like to, uh, join us at that, uh, please. Uh, let me know as soon as possible, please, and I'll, we can get another table.
I'll go.
I'll go.
And I promise to be nice.
Me too. It's actually fun.
It's fun.
Yeah, I'll go if you have me.
Yeah.
I just wanna see Mayor Rackle speak in front of all those people. I know how comfortable you are.
Yes. It's gonna go well.
My favorite thing of the year.
So, sorry, who else was gonna, who else said I?
Derek, I did, I think Chris said he would go.
Yeah, I'll go again.
Jerry's coming.
Wow. Rolling in deep.
Uh huh.
Okay, I think we're gonna have to publish this, Sheila.
You're gonna up your game, so you got your fancy video like the other towns?
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah. Come on, Mr. Rackle, you gotta get on the top here.
I like doing it live.
You're always last.
Yeah.
Some of those towns really go into that, like, I'm pretty impressed. Yeah, your guys was great, just, so no worries there, but I know.
We, we're, we're gonna do a, uh, we're gonna do a blend this year.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we are gonna up our game.
Nice.
How much up? Not sure, can't make any promises.
Do be determined, do be determined.
Exactly.
Your ascots.
That's good. That's all.
Oh, Jeff, I was just reading this last part, so. Where are we at with that JDS Hydro and their review of Duberry?
Yeah, we have a, we, we just received their, um, scope of work and we, we, uh, staffs reviewed it. Uh, I'm not sure Tony's looked at it yet, but we're, have approved it, so we're moving that forward.
Got it, okay.
And we've met with them, so.
Good.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it.
Got it.
All right, so. That was a nice conversation. Do we have any updates from the board and board comments?
I do, but I don't know where you started.
We'll start with you then.
All right.
Trusty Clausen.
Um, uh, this is a question for Treasurer Tucker. All of the businesses are up to date on their sales tax, correct?
Um. At quick glance, yes, I mean, I can't tell you if, um, every online business or any business online that has. Um, sold something in Silt is up to date. Because I don't know that it's been sold or delivered.
Oh, yeah, understood, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And. I. You know, wanted to, you know, one of my thoughts, well, I guess on, on the town code. Is, and it deals with water, you know, and how the town repairs it. Cause most municipalities where the curb stop is or the water shut off to the property. That's the dividing line between the municipality and the homeowners. And the town's code is extremely vague over who repairs what, but a lot of municipalities, they'll go from the main. The service line from the main to the curb stop is theirs, and they'll take care of that, but from the curb stop into the home is the homeowners. And, you know, that's just something that I'd like to see cleaned up someday is, is more. You know, a stronger definition as to who's who's, because like, you know, what Director Foner mentioned last time when we. Where the town had that water leak, you know, you didn't really necessarily know, and technically how the code is. It would be up to the homeowner to dig up the street and repair it and everything. You know, but you don't necessarily know where the leak is or whose side it is, and another question is in terms of. You know, doing, do you necessarily want people that may or may not be qualified? Close to the town's water main where, you know, there's that possibility of contamination.
And I think, I think Director Foner and our attorney are working on that.
Okay, nice.
This time.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Cause it is, it contradicts itself in a couple spots and it is kinda confusing. Yeah. To read that section of code. So, and then, and then I noticed, you know, and, uh, thought. You know, cause we had a couple of, of treatment operators who got the ray and they, there's little blurb in the newsletter. And my thought was, why don't we do that with all the employees? Just a little blurb of all the employees, just so citizens know who they are and, and stuff like that. You know, just to kinda, you know, a little shout out to everybody. And then my other thing was. Um, on the town's website, it would be nice to have more than a couple of years. Um, of P and Z, uh, packets and board packets, because if somebody. You know, has a question or, or even us, if we need to do research going, yeah, we thought about that a couple of years ago, but it would be nice to. Go back on, you know, to look at those, because there is a question I had a month ago. And it would have been on, because I think we have, we had this year and last year's is on there, but I think it was in twenty twenty-one. And it would be nice just to go and do that research, you know, at home. As opposed to, I think I did find an answer, but as opposed to bothering staff with something like that, it would be nice to. To have an extra year or two on the website and also for the citizens, you know, if they're like, yeah, well, they talked about it. You know, two or three years ago, then the citizens can go to that and kind of pinpoint it out and say, you know, they talked about. Whatever it is this date, but they haven't done anything yet, you know, and just. It, it would just, I, I feel it would be a little bit helpful to have a couple more years.
And if I can, uh, respond to that, Chris.
Sure.
We intentionally take a lot of that off because our website doesn't have the room to hold all of that. We get to a point where we go to load a board packet or a P and Z packet and our website locks up, we've run out of space, so we have to. Delete some of the older stuff and then people can, of course, do our records request if they wanna get that information. I know it's a little more cumbersome, but. Um, that's kind of the option we took at this time.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, I understood, and I'm not tech savvy at all, but. Is there some sort of cloud-based website that we can stick all that information on?
Yes.
Sheila, Sheila, I'll follow up with you on that. This is one hundred percent solvable.
Okay, yeah.
Expensive and it's not complicated.
We can get Nicole involved with it, cause she's our, our website master.
She may be sick of dealing with me, but I'll try.
Okay, right.
All right.
That's all I have.
Okay, Trusty Seifer?
No updates for me.
Mayor Proton?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks to Trey and the staff that, uh, put on the tour at the water plant. Um, and then the citizens that I met out there, I mean, they just took time out of your day to do it, answered a lot of questions. Took some hard questions from people and it was great, so thank you guys very much for allowing us to do that. I think it was very valuable, so I appreciate it.
All right. Trusty Henry?
Nothing here.
Trust Cora?
No, nothing here.
Chris Britton? Okay, um, I just wanna do a, a thank you and a congratulations to, um, Sarah and Daryl for getting their, their level A. Um, you know, it's a congratulations because they earned something and it's a thank you for doing that for the town. Um, you know, those are the, the, the employees that, that do things like that are, are more beneficial to the town, so. Just appreciate them taking care of that and making sure we're good to go, so. Other than that, I've got nothing else.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Say again.
Uh, Dr. Mayor Proton made a motion to adjourn the meeting, second by Trusty Britton, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Oh, she carries unanimously, all right.
Hey, Justin, way to go, Chiefs.
Yes.